Okay, Lynn, we'll wait to 7:05, but also let me know when you're ready to go.
Okay, give me one minute and I'll be ready.
Sure.
Okay.
Good to go?
I'm good to go.
Okay, hopefully Dick and Kent will join us. Good evening, this is the virtual regular meeting Planning and Zoning Commission in New Canaan, Connecticut, August 25th, 2020. As before, Lynn Avney, who's the Town Planner, will be running the meeting, letting people in and out. I also have a big announcement, today is Lynn's birthday, happy birthday Lynn.
Thank you.
You turned 28.
Yes, what? Did I turn what?
Twenty-eight.
Again, yes.
Okay, let's do a roll call. John Goodwin here, Jinger's Lucky.
Here.
Jack Flynn, hopefully Jack will join us, John Chris.
Present.
Dan Radman.
Here.
Claire Tiscorni will not be attending tonight, Kent Turner.
He's not here yet, as soon as he joins, I'll let you know.
Okay, Dick Ward, same thing, I assume?
Yes, he's not here yet.
Okay, Phil Williams will not be attending tonight, Krista Nielsen.
Here.
And Arthur Cassavant, I assume is still in Maine with a power failure, he hasn't joined, has he?
He hasn't yet, but he said if he gets power back, he will.
Yep, I got it, okay. Mrs. Nielsen, you're seated for Mrs. Tiscornia tonight. I do not have any other announcements, so let's get going with the public hearing. Item number one, 842 Ponus Ridge Road, upon application Gregory Sages Authorized Agent for the Nationalist Trust for Historic Preservation Owners for a Special Permit Modification Due to the COVID-19 Crisis of Sections 32(c)(16) and A2(b) to allow modifications of conditions of existing special permit of the commissions January 27, 1998, last modified on May 26, 2020. Authorizing use of 842 Ponus Ridge as a limited public access museum, The Glass House for property in the two acre zone at 842 Ponus Ridge Road, Mr. Sages.
Oh, let me unmute him, sorry.
Hold on a minute, Greg.
Yep.
There you are.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Greg Sages, I'm the Executive Director of The Glass House at 842 Ponus Ridge Road in New Canaan. The Glass House is requesting a permit modification to cover two items this evening. The first is to extend the existing modification for the remainder of The Glass House tour season that was granted on May 26.
Keep going, please.
Okay, that was granted on May 26 that enabled us to have visitors drive direct to the site and/or park at West School. The second item is I'm applying for a permission to hold a wedding on the premises in the beginning of October, subject to the State of Connecticut guidelines in effect at that time. As to the first item, at the May 26 Zoom meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission granted a temporary permit modification to allow Glass House visitors to park at the site in West School, as I mentioned, that was granted for a three month period, and it was necessitated by the need for social distancing, which could not be achieved with our tour vehicle busing people from the downtown visitor center to the site. Though Connecticut has been very effective and successful in containing COVID-19, the need for social distancing continues for the foreseeable future, therefore I'm asking that the permit modification be extended through the end of our tour season, which is December 15. That's item number one. Unless there are questions, I'll move on to item number two.
Let's, Mr. Sages kindly present both, and then we can do Q and A on both.
Okay, the second item is The Glass House has received a request to hold a wedding reception on our property on Sunday, October 4. Attendance would be limited to 75 persons or fewer if state guidelines are lower. The event would take place starting at noon, guests would depart by 5:00, and all activity on the site would be ended by 8:00 p.m. Parking would take place at the West School, special duty police will be hired to ensure safe crossing from West School to the site. One tent would be erected for the guests and a second tent for the cooking catering, and sanitation would be provided by porta-potties that would be rented. Both tents and porta-potties would be located outside of the sightlines of our neighbors, as we do with our summer party annual fundraiser and other events on the property. All necessary permits will be obtained from the town, and all guests, service providers, and Glass House staff working the event would be tested for COVID prior to the event. As a result of the COVID pandemic, The Glass House has been unable to hold its annual fundraiser, or for that matter, numerous other functions, and visitation is down around 30% of what the norm is for pre-COVID situation. Overall, that impact to us in a fiscal year is about $500,000, so it's a significant burden. The existing Glass House permit allows for four special programmatic events per season of up to 150 persons. The stipulation is that it be directly related to the history, education, and cultural mission of The Glass House, and while this event that I'm proposing is not strictly compliant, the families involved are architecture and art aficionados, and their desire to support the site prompted them to approach us. Several neighbors have expressed concern about setting precedent by granting this request, and have implied that we would be engaging in a commercial activity. First of all, we have not used any of the four events for this season, and really do not anticipate using any more for the rest of the tour season, other than this one. We have not and will not hold ourselves out to the public as a venue for hire. We have no other requests in contemplation at this point, and this event would actually be less impactful to the neighborhood than those that are already permitted for the special programmatic events. It would also provide a substantial economic benefit for The Glass House. Any of our neighbors in this residential zone could hold such an event in their yards, and some actually have. You may have seen articles in the press, including one in Forbes, that anticipated that as much as one-third of museums in America will go bankrupt as a result of the COVID situation. One neighbor suggests finding outside donors in place of this type of event. We've always done so, but particularly in this environment, donors and foundations are favoring humanitarian not-for-profit enterprises. So we respectfully request approval of the proposed event in light of the impact of the COVID-19, and the lack of detrimental impact to the neighbors.
Excuse me, questions for the applicant?
Greg, what do you expect in the way of music, or noise, or whatever?
So October 4th implies unpredictable weather, it will be a tent-based event, music will be within the tent, and we have a noise ordinance guidance in our existing permit, and we would be in compliance with that as we do with each of our events.
So we'd be in compliance with one of the four events?
Well, it would be in compliance with the noise ordinance that's in our existing permit, yes.
Regarding the first request, the extension, you're asking the extension through mid-December, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And could you just bullet point some of the main aspects of this request for the commission, as well as those listening in?
Normally, our visitors arrive at the downtown visitor center, and then are bused to the site by a vehicle that we have with social distancing guidelines, and we could probably get three people on the vehicle in one trip, and that's just not practical in terms of running the tour operation. So in May, I had come before the commission to ask for permission to have people drive direct to the site. We've limited it to 20 people onsite at any one time. Typically, people are not coming alone in this environment, so the number of vehicles that have been coming is 10 or fewer per day, or per tour session.
And the current waiver extends through what date? You mentioned it was requested at the end of May, so is it expired already?
No, tomorrow.
Tomorrow expires, okay.
Yes.
And so you're asking for essentially about a three and two-thirds month extension?
That's right, and we have not made tickets available for tomorrow or beyond at this point.
So there's no change being requested at all from the special waiver that was given for the past couple months, it's just extending the deadlines, the only request you're making?
That's right.
Everything else stays the same?
Yes.
Thank you.
So it's to the end of your season, correct?
That's right, December 15th for the existing permit.
And how often, what's been the experience in terms of using parking onsite included in that, have you had to use West School?
We have had our personnel, Glass House staff, park at West School, and it's been on average three vehicles per day, but the site can accommodate those three vehicles. So in anticipation of the school reopening, we probably would continue to use it on the weekend, and West School parking lot on the weekend, but during the week, we would probably A) have fewer visitors coming, and B) would be able to accommodate their vehicles on the site.
Okay.
As a follow-up, have you received any comments, criticisms, other input from neighbors or others in town regarding this different parking and entering the premises?
So the general reaction from the public has been very positive. I had not received any complaints or criticisms. When I sent out an email to the adjacent property owners, one did respond by saying that she's had several people stopped by there, she said, because they thought it was The Glass House. Well, clearly, we give them an address, people typically have direction finders, so I'm not sure why that's happening, but we have implemented larger signs at the entrance to The Glass House parking area, and are reinforcing that when we're interacting with those buying tickets, that it's 842 Ponus, not anything else.
A question for Lynn Avney, have you, as Town Planner, received any commentary, adverse or otherwise, from any town residents regarding this arrangement we've had with The Glass House?
No, we've received none, neither good nor bad, nothing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I've got a question regarding other homes on the National Historic Register, are you aware of any of the others being rented for events like weddings?
If you're talking about New Canaan, I'm not at all familiar with that.
No, just in general, like for example, I've been to the Meyer May House, the Frank Lloyd Wright House out in Grand Rapids for a dinner similar to the type of dinner you offer at the event that you offer at The Glass House, but for a larger event like a wedding, are you aware of that being allowed at any of the other historic homes?
Yes, so Lindhurst, which is in Terrytown, and is also owned by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, holds many weddings per season. There's another mid-century modern called Pope Leahy House, along with Woodlawn Plantation down in the DC area, again owned by the National Trust, and they do weddings on a regular basis, and there's another one out in California, Filoli, that does weddings, and they're all active in this current environment.
Gotcha. Have you had any overnights?
No.
No, it's offered though, right?
That is offered, yes.
Anybody else? Okay, would anyone from the public like to address this application?
I don't see anybody from the public, hold on one second. Mr. Dear, are you here for this application? Bruce, are you here for this application? None of the names that are popping up are actually any of the neighbors that sent letters, and no one has a hand raised or has indicated that they want to speak.
Okay.
And there's a large group for the next.
No, that sounds thorough, this application's closed. The next two items will be heard together. Item number two, discussion and consideration, the request, Jaclyn Kaufman, Carmody Torrance Sandak, Kenness, the Authorization for Thomas A. Sanseverino, owner 81012 and 14 Houston Lane. And now, the posting says on Lynn Corson, owner 16 Houston Lane, but I note that that is no longer part of the application. Petition for change in zoning boundary pursuant to Section 82d for properties currently in the B residence zone to the retail B zone, 8 Houston Lane, and Houston Lane, 12 Houston Lane, 14 Houston Lane, I'm skipping 16 Houston Lane, as well as Houston Lane. And item number three, 8 and 10 Houston Lane, upon application, Jaclyn Kaufman, Carmody Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy, Authorized Agent for Thomas A. Sanseverino, owner for a special permanent site plan approval of Sections 4343D1, 43D1D, 4HC, 6H1, A2B, and A2A, to permit a mixed-use development containing 12 residential dwelling units and approximately 315 square feet of commercial space with associated parking, landscaping, utility, and site improvements at 8 Houston Lane and 10 Houston Lane, as well as Houston Lane and the proposed retail B zone. Ms. Kaufman?
Hi, good evening, my name is Jackie Kaufman, Carmody Torrance, Sandak and Hennessy, representing Thomas Sanseverino in the pending application for the redevelopment of 810 Houston Lane and Houston Lane, and also on the zoning map change for 81012 and 14 Houston Lane, and you are correct, Mr. Chairman, we have removed number 16 from the zoning map change request, and therefore also Ms. Corson, who's here with us tonight as well. We have formally resubmitted the plan and the legal description to staff, which you should have before you. If I can ask, Lynn, would you mind putting up our PowerPoint presentation that you have, so that I can reference some things tonight? We've spent the last month productively revising some of the plans in respect to some of the questions and requests made from the commission members. Specifically, we revised the landscape plan to include all new native plantings, and we've done a deep dive into the title, we've worked closely with DPW and revised the grading plan accordingly, and we've continued to work closely with our neighbors on some private negotiations associated with the potential for Phase Two. With me tonight, again, are Lenny DeAndrea, our Civil Engineer from DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering, Ryan Salvatore, our Architect from Ryan Salvatore Design, I believe, Blithiost, our Landscape Architect should be with us, although I can't tell at the moment if she is on or not, but she should be with us. My associate, Dave Klein, and my colleague, Mike Murray of Ivy Barnum and O'Mara. Mr. Sanseverino regretfully couldn't make it tonight, but if we do need something from him, I can reach him. But also, we would like to request to keep the hearing open beyond tonight after we share with you our updates, because we're continuing to work with our neighbors as in private negotiations, and also, one of those includes an easement we now need as a result of some of the regrading. So we'll get to that tonight, so you have a visual associated with that as well. So we have up in front of us, just to reorient you, the star is right over 810 Houston Lane, which is currently redeveloped. We can quickly go through Slides Three. Here's our tax map, and let's just go through some site photos, if you don't mind. Lynn, you can go through each one of those and leave it up for a few seconds as I speak. We spoke to these last time, but they didn't make it up onto the website. So here's just to orient you with Heritage Hill, and where the mouth of Houston Lane opens, to give you an idea of existing sidewalk here, coming down into the property. That greenhouse you see is number 10, and then as you turn the corner and you head down, what becomes then the private driveway to the white building and the brick buildings, those are 12 and 14. 16, that's Miss Corson's home. And this is now a view of the back of 8 and 10, and I welcome you to look at these more closely, if you haven't been down to the property at your convenience. So that's a look into the property, and then that view here is what you see from the condos to the north. So let's go down to Slide number 28, please Lynn. Thank you. And this is the most recently updated zone change map. At the last hearing, we did, I think, show you a representation of this, this is now finalized and refined, and we've included the meets and bounds, so you can see it includes all of Houston Lane and numbers 8, 10, 12, and 14 for zone change from res B to retail B. What do we have next, let's see, updated, and this one is, that was 728 in our last hearing, here's the one that's updated, it's nearly identical. One thing that you raised was a question about the ownership of Houston Lane, and Attorney Murray had spoken to that briefly, we have, since our last meeting, obtained title insurance over the road, so it is included in the property's meets and bounds, it will be merged in with 8 and 10. Here's the zoning change, if there are any additional questions, I feel like we went through the map change request, and the supporting reasons for it in detail at the last meeting, but I'm happy to revisit that and answer any questions that anyone has on that.
I have a question on the title insurance.
Yes.
Could you walk us through what the title insurance covers, and some more detail on why you decided to get it?
Yes, Mike, would you like to answer that question? Mike Murray, are you with us? I can't see him.
Hold on one second.
But I know that he's here with us, there he is.
Hold on, I need to unmute him.
They muted him again, Lynn.
Oh yes, I did, sorry. Can you?
He's still muted.
Yeah, I have a moment delay on mine. Are you on? There he is, okay.
Good to go, Mr. Murray.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for allowing me to speak. It wasn't so much that we decided to get it, it was a rather confusing title search, it went back a long ways, and the title company continued to sort it out, and recently, they came to the conclusion that the road does indeed go with Mr. Sanseverino's parcels. So it was more of an update rather than going out and getting it.
So the title insurance covers what?
It confirms that the applicant does indeed own the road.
Okay, and the road also, Mrs. Corson has an easement on using the road with no cause of her?
Yes, indeed, she has rights to use it, correct.
So not just her, but the owner of that property has rights in perpetuity to access his or her property?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and that would not be affected at all by this proposed development?
No, in fact, when we were here last time, the question was, does Mr. Sanseverino own it, or does he have? We always knew everybody had a right to use it, but we just confirmed the fee ownership to it.
Thank you.
One of the benefits, and we just found this out very, very recently, so one of the benefits is that we have asked, because of that question, we asked for a special permit of the front yard setback, because at one point, the building right at the corner of number 10, where the property line ends now, which is different from where the road ends, so the property line ends, we were looking at the road as its own piece. So in an abundance of caution, we requested a front yard setback adjustment to be relocated to the building line, which is also the property line, the regulations allow for that, but now that we have confirmed the fee ownership, we can merge these parcels, which means that we will not need that five-foot setback, so I will confirm that with staff in writing following this meeting, so that's a good thing.
Mrs. Kaufman, you remember last month, I posed the question of why not just do the map change at this point for 8 and 10, and I don't know how other commissioners feel about this, but my thinking about it is, as I noted, I think we want to be careful when we're expanding the footprint of, let's call it downtown. Also, the map looks a little different with 16 sort of sticking into it. And from my perspective, from a planning perspective, I'm just asking myself if that's just maybe a more conservative, cautious way to do things, let you do what you want to achieve now, and then when you're ready to do your Phase Two, come back to us, but what are your thoughts?
We have, we discussed that as a development team, and Mr. Sanseverino would like to go forward with all four properties now, because he does have an intent to redevelop the other pieces with a companion building and a companion project, which he intends to be primarily residential and fit within the res B, excuse me, the retail B opportunities. We've been working with some of our neighbors who have had questions about that and what Phase Two looks like, and I believe we do have our Phase Two plan, we can go back to that if you don't mind, Lynn, just to speak to that, because it is critical to this part of the discussion, it's towards the end, might be the second to last, there we go, with a pink. This is an attached concept, here's a concept plan that shows something that could be built, this shows 20 units with a companion commercial space, and that could be built within the brands of the regulations, what we could do today, that would be a That would be a comfortable number. It could be parked and circulated well, certainly. And a commitment to this type of design, I know, is important to the people who live around us. So that's something that we are privately discussing with our neighbors. And we hope to have resolution for shortly. And we think that also would give the community and the commission some comfort in knowing how the right, how the map change could be, could and would be used. And we would privately, we would like to privately restrict the way this development would be handled on a, from a, on a title perspective, not, not in a condition certainly attached to the zone change. So we think that it can be, it can be, it can be managed well now, certainly from, even with 16, a budding, which is in the resby, it continues to butt resby. So there is continuity for all of the zones. I know it doesn't look as elegant as when all would be there together, but there is no, right now, Ms. Corson intends to live there for, for a long time. And these are the properties that we own and can control and have, have a plan and a good plan for, for redevelopment. And it does allow the property, it allows Mr. Sanseverino to move forward with his own planning in a very, in a very mindful way, to be able to have everything changed now. But also, I think that it provide, there's, there's continuity for, for the map, for the, for the town map, to have this all taken up together, especially since it's all served. It really serves as its own little hammer. It's all served by Houston Lane.
Is there a timetable for Phase Two?
After Phase One is completed, so it may be within, maybe within five years. Mr. Sanseverino is not on with us right now, but, you know, his intention is to have it all move forward continuously.
Thank you. Any other question?
The commission has very strong thoughts on it. I'm, I'm open to continuing this discussion with you, too.
Okay. And any other questions on the map change, commissioners? Okay, why don't we go ahead with the special permit site plan, please?
I'm sorry, was there one, was there an additional question?
Oh, was there? Oh, sorry, Mr. Chris.
Yeah. Certainly, Ms. Corson has the privilege of remaining in her home as long as she cares to do so. But it just, I, I just feel that the commission may wish to think about what would happen if the ownership of that property were to change hands and the owner of the adjacent properties, whom you represent, Ms. Kaufman, would seem to be an obvious purchaser. I would think that if that parcel were available as a block, that the thinking regarding Phase Two might be changed significantly. And I'm just wondering how the commission ought to think about that possibility now, or whether this is something to think about later, should such an event occur.
It's something that, that, that the owner has certainly talked about with Ms. Corson. And he's expressed to, to her his interest in purchasing it. Looking at it, we've, we've looked at it very broadly, but there could be an option for additional residential townhomes to be placed there. That's, that's been part of the discussion now. But because they don't own it, control it, and because that, that transaction is not imminent, it's not, it's, it's not something that we can put forth to you with any certainty. And we respect, you know, Ms. Corson's decision right now to, to remain not part of this application. Certainly, we would like to change all of them together. I think it does make a lot of sense. But that's her property, and it's not something that she's ready to engage in. But I can tell you that, that my client has every intention of purchasing it if and when she is ready to, to offer it.
Thank you.
And as part of Phase Two, we certainly would have to come back to the, it's the commission. Nothing that the, the zone change would require an additional application. In the same spirit that this application has been brought to you, because section, excuse me, let's see, which section am I back into? Section 43D, 43D1 requires all residential dwelling unit projects to come back for special permit approval. So we will see you again for Phase Two. And depending on what, you know, when that is, if it's sooner, it may not include that property. If it's later, it may include that property. So time, so time will tell, but we certainly can't do this under the dark of night by any means. We will see you again for Phase Two. And we do have a commitment now to a, a mostly residential development there. We think that's what's most appropriate.
There's a final question on the current buildings there. The two houses in front, the greenhouse, and I call it the pumpkin-colored house, those are single-family rentals?
They're multifamily.
They're two-family each?
I believe so, yes.
So the two houses that are closest to Heritage Hill are each two-family houses?
One is a single-family, one is a, one is a multifamily.
Two-family. And the, when you go down the hill, the two larger buildings that are multifamily, how many units in each one?
There are, oh, hold on, I'll tell you, but let me get back to this part of my notes. I don't remember off the top of my head.
I believe it's.
I think it's four and six, four and five. There are 11 units total.
And so.
Ryan, do you know off the top of your head how many are in the, I, I'm sorry that I don't. I believe that it's, it's other, I think it's four and, four and.
And three.
Nine, 10, 11, 12, yeah. Four and three, you said? Four and three, I thought.
So the, the two houses go and get, would get replaced in your proposal by 12 units, 12 living units?
That's correct.
And the seven units that are down the hill would be potentially replaced by 20 units?
By up to 20.
I would assume the price point, these will all be rentals?
Yes, they will.
I would assume the price point for the new accommodation would be higher than the current buildings that are there?
Most likely. But they are going to still be at a, an affordable price point. This will be a mid, a mid-range price point. The point is, I, I think that the goal is to create an accessible unit. Economically accessible.
Okay, anybody, Ms. Nielsen?
Yes. I mean, I know it's all speculative, but if you were to, if your client was able to acquire the last property at some point in the future, I'm assuming that would change the design of Phase Two?
It could. Now, it may be that at some point in the future, that's acquired after Phase Two. And what we're looking at Phase Two is really, which is a massing study. What, what would be the appropriate size building? How, how many units could be fit there? It's really a puzzle. And how, what would be the accommodating or required parking for that? So we fit all of that in there. And that's not to say that once the first Phase One is completed, that that building massing remains the same. It may be that it's refined in a way that results in less units, or maybe it's townhomes instead of flats. Right now, it's a combination, what you see there, our combination of flats and townhomes with a circulation that goes under the building. So after you, you were there and you're, you're working on that and that gets refined, it may be, it may be different. If at the time, we do have additional acreage to work with, it may definitely impact what you see there. But the goal would still be to have a primarily residential development. I think Ms. Corson is trying to say something.
We'll, we'll have Mrs., Ms. Corson address when we open up to the public.
Yeah, one final question on the proposed development. If, just as a for instance, Ms. Corson were to sell her property to your client tomorrow, would the current application for the 12-unit development you're discussing be changed at all?
No, we're here today with a project for 8 and 10 only. And then we are talking conceptually about what Phase Two looks like. And that would be 12, 14, potentially 16 when that time comes.
Okay, anybody else on the map change? Okay, let's move on to the special permit site plan, please.
Okay, thank you. Since we're talking about the buildings and the massing, the architecture, I'd like to start with and invite Mr. Salvatore to speak to the question that was raised about sustainability features in the building. We have submitted to you, if you've had a chance to look at it, a memo summarizing those, but he can also walk you through that answer.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity to address this. And I think the memo that you have probably does a better job than I might hitting on each of the items. I'd be more than happy to entertain questions. I want to reinforce something that I said at our last meeting, which is that, at this point, a lot of the technical details of the building, which often are what yield, let's say, the green technologies or construction technologies that are, are the most environmentally sensitive ways of doing things. That's what, it's during the construction documents phase when that stuff is really ironed out. We did have some preliminary conversations with MEP engineers to help identify where we think we might be going. And then there are other things, which, as I mentioned last time, are really kind of fundamental to the site. Proximity to downtown, proximity to public transportation, replacing existing buildings on an infill site. Those things are really kind of baselines that relate to the site. And so we tried to summarize as best we could, but at this point, I think I'd be more than happy to take any questions. But I think the document probably does a better job than, than anything I might say right now.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Salvatore? Okay, let's keep going.
Okay, if we can go back, Lynn, if you don't mind, to the landscape plan. Thank you. If we can go to our updated, this is, okay, this, let's stick with this. Here's our updated landscaping plan. The plantings that were non-native have all been replaced with native plantings. And there's been an accompanying memo to this as well, so that there's an easy to read document that outlines the changes. Ms. Yost is on the phone, our landscape architect, to, to answer any questions as well. Part of our special permit, let's, let's stick with this for just a moment, if you don't mind, please, Lynn, just because this is easy to read. Let's go to number 38. Number 37, which is what's before you now, go through each of the species to responsive to the questions. But if we can go to number 38, please. Thank you. I, I just like this because it's a good visual of, of the site redevelopment. And we have requested a special permit of Section 6H1 to reduce landscape standards under this section where other landscape, adequate landscape treatment is available. And it, which you can see if you're looking at the plans before you very, very closely, at the, at the southerlymost part of the site, you'll see one, two, three, four, five, six trees at the lining, the southerly perimeter and at the corner. And that's the perimeter that is adjacent to the town parking lot. Just north of that, there are, there's a row, thank you, Lynn, there's a row here of 11 parking spaces. The regulations read that a maximum of 10 parking spaces are allowed in a row without a landscaped aisle or some type of treatment break. However, in the westerly corner here is a handicap space. And then on the other side, we also have our, our trash on the easterly side. And locating the parking here, adjacent to an existing parking lot, is, we think, the most effective use of the space. The goal is, while even though there is paving that's adjacent to Ms. Corson's property, which you can see just to the north, that having parked cars there is not ideal. And also not having parked cars adjacent to the other properties to the west is not ideal. So we would like the ability, please, to put the 11 spaces right in a row so that they do not, we do not have to relocate one to another less, less appropriate area here. Certainly, the same number, same amount of landscaping that would be required will be installed around the perimeter of this area, which I think you can clearly see from, from this plan. You'll see landscaping on both sides of the parking row. A tree is also required to be planted within parking islands for every 10 spaces. And the same number of trees that would be required within the parking area will be parked, will be located here. Does anyone have any questions about the landscape plan or the landscape revisions?
Just to be clear, the, John Chris speaking. To be clear, the plants listed on Slide 38 are the ones that were the old plan, not the new plan. So you're not going to use those. So all the plants that will be installed on the property, including buffers and everything else, are the ones that are listed on Slide 37. Is that correct?
That is correct. The one that says updated here in August. And then there's also a memorandum that's been provided to you so that you can see and outline how those changes have been made.
I, I took the liberty of looking up every one of the plants. And they, they are natives. A number of them are attracted to birds and butterflies and other pollinators. Some have more winter interest than, than others, which seems very reasonable, since we do have seasons. And they all are native to eastern parts of North America. So they seem to be very nice plants. And I'm very encouraged of the complete use of not only native plants, but ones that are friendly to wildlife. So encouraged by this.
Thank you for the suggestion. We can keep that up, actually, Lynn, if you don't mind. I'd like to, as we start to transition into some engineering, I think it's helpful for me to take a look at that plan. The, there have been some engineering edits. Mr. DeAndrea is on with us. And I'll ask him to summarize those for you in his most recent discussions with DPW. But you can see that one of the, the features which we are excited about, it's not updated on this plan. Jason, do you know what number slide they revised, this revised plan is? You can't see it as well on this one. Lynn, can I just go back to see the side?
Oh, that's not the slide that John, I was just showing the picture off of the website, because it was.
Oh, okay.
It was a maximize, but I'll go back to the slide. Give me a second.
Okay, so this, no, if we can keep going down, please. Going down. 142. These are a bit harder to read on, on the plan. I'm just looking for the revised color landscape plan. Okay, let's just go to this, let's go to the last, this, let's go back to Slide 38, please. And then we'll go back to the last slide. You can see here is, is adjacent from the center of the building is a stairwell. So when you looked at the photos that we showed earlier tonight, you see that the Houston Lane, it slopes down gradient. So the idea is to create, have the retaining wall remain, and then to have stairs come off of that and then up and connect out to the sidewalk on Houston Lane, which we think is a nice amenity to connect the road to the center of the development. And Lynn, if you don't mind going back down to the, to the final plan, the final slide, we have a close-up of this section. This has had to, it's had to shift slightly. You can see that the, if you look to the right, that we have to come out now slightly with, to, to connect out to the sidewalk. That strip of land between the stair landing, so the stairs and the retaining walls remain entirely on the property. But to connect this feature out to the sidewalk, this strip of land that runs right in the middle of it is, is actually owned, it's a small tail owned by the condos to the north. So we have requested an easement from them so that we can connect, connect this out to the sidewalk. And Mr. DeAndrea can tell you a little bit more about that from a technical standpoint and walk you through some of his adjustments. But that's another item that we are continuing to look at. We, we hopefully don't think that's an issue. But it exists, and we wanted to point that out to the commission that we're aware of and are working on that. The alternative is that we just don't build this feature if, if we can't acquire that easement. Lenny, would you like to take the opportunity now to talk about some of your updates?
Sure, if we could go back up to probably, the grading plan might be a good one to look at. I know it's tough to see as a, as a slide, but.
That's 46 or 47, Lynn.
Would you prefer me to just bring it up as a regular document from the website?
Yeah, that'd be great. Sure.
Okay, give me a second.
All right.
You can keep talking. You can keep talking.
Well, I was gonna say, while you're doing that, we, you know, we've received comments from the town engineer. They're all very good. A lot of them were little house cleaning and clarifications, notes and details. Talked about pre-treatment and water quality and went through how we have those processes taken care of with infiltrators and now added what we call a oil grit separator. And the positive part for this project too, because of those systems, we have both a decrease in the peak rate of flow off the site as well as volume. So that was, that was a good achievement. But one of the things that stuck out right away when she talked about plan comments was this bit about accessible routes. And after all, this is kind of a downtown project. And we noticed what was, as she noticed, was a more accessible link to Heritage Hill Road. So we worked with Ryan Salvatore. And when you get down to the grading plan, that's pretty good. You'll, if you can see this now, there's a sidewalk, if this is the latest plan. That, is that revision for Lynn?
This is revision.
Zero, one, two, three.
Four.
Okay, so what we've done is on the.
Let me still think. Keep talking, sorry.
Okay, so what we've done on the east side of Houston Lane, coming out of the front door, you'd take a left. And we've added a sidewalk that's at a very, very soft gradient that will take you right from the front door on the eastly side of Houston Lane, right to the sidewalk that begins at the mouth of our intersection on Heritage Hill Road. So we thought that was a great amenity and it serves its purpose. This is pedestrian-friendly. You walk right out a few minutes away from downtown. And so that was a very, very good addition. The other thing she mentioned was something very similar in the back of the building. We had the handicap parking space, but we neglected to provide a handicap accessible ramp into the parking garage so they could access the elevator. So that's been taken care of as well. And out of that, we looked at sanitary sewer. We did a video of that. That's been provided. And we clarified for her and demonstrated how the existing drainage is already connected to an existing drainage line that goes through the town and out to the Five Mile River. So again, there were a lot of little house cleaning items and clarification. But I think a couple of the big points were added, those two sidewalks, the sidewalk in Houston Lane and the accessible route in the back of the building. Unfortunately, again, the revision is shown now on grading plan sheet one of four revision four. It's dated eight twenty, so it was just recently completed. But that's the one that adds a sidewalk, as we'll see.
Thank you, Lenny.
Yep.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. DeAndrea? Okay, looks like we're good. Keep going, Mrs. Kaufman.
Those, that summarizes all of our updates for you. So we are going to continue to, to work on this. I don't know if we have our final supportive comments. Lynn, did anything come in today from DPW?
No.
Okay, so we're awaiting a final referral comment, but we feel that we've met all of, all of those requests. And we will continue to refine, refine our conversations with our narrative, with our neighbors. I think for additional support, or if you're, if you're looking just to read more about the zone change, our narrative and the zoning change narrative include very detailed responses to section eight and to section eight standards, as well as all the requirements in the town plan of conservation and development for the, our support for the zone change. So we encourage you to look at that as well.
Great, thank you. Lynn, any questions? Are you in?
No, they, they said revised plans, the latest version came yesterday afternoon. So, and that's that I haven't looked through yet. So no questions right now.
We've all agreed, we'll keep it open. So let's, let's open it up to the public, please, Lynn.
Okay. Ms. Corson, I know wants to speak before you told her that you could, she could start at the public portion. I'm gonna unmute her first.
Thank you. I'm just gonna echo my comments that I conveyed last week. And it's really my concerns with regards to phase two, that that project is not defined. I think the, the density is just problematic. You're going from a lane that has twelve residents to now a combined lane that's gonna have thirty-two residents. I do have some issues with that. So while I know I certainly have no say in the matter, I certainly support Mr. Goodwin's approach to look at this as a, as a phase one and then cross phase two's path when we get there. Because I do have concerns about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Lampert?
Yeah, you know, I'd like to echo the same concerns just about the magnitude of the project and also expanding into the retail area. But more importantly, it's the traffic that may come out of Houston Lane with thirty-two units or even more if there's a phase three potentially. That being said, I've been in touch with Mr. Severino and Attorney Kaufman, and we're working towards coming to what we would perceive to be an amicable resolution. And I'm, I'm optimistic we could find some networks for everybody, at least on our end, you know, so that they could give that to, to you guys to go down.
We are as well.
And obviously, I'm reserving all my rights to speak at the next hearing, should, should I need to.
Now, a next hearing will be open to the public once again. Excuse me, anybody else from the public? Pardon me.
Hold on one second. I don't. Nancy, are you here to speak for this meeting? Mr. Stevens, you had your hand up. Do you want to speak for this meeting?
Yes, hi, it's Jim Stevens. I represent the Owen Oak Association, so I just wanted to, which is the Northern Condo Association referenced in the applicant. So as Mr. Lampert said, we're having, and as Kaufman mentioned, we're having conversations with the applicant and hope those conversations can continue. We'd like to continue to be able to speak at the, at the next meeting as well. We do have our concerns, as Mr. Lampert mentioned, about size and traffic, et cetera, from our residents and other members of our board. So we look forward to kind of continuing the conversation with the applicant.
Okay, thank you. One thing I would encourage the public, those of you, is if, for whatever reason, items of your discussions with the applicant break down do not go in the right direction, I would encourage you to provide, to consider, it's up to you, consider providing written commentary to the commission beforehand. Because this, next month could be the meeting in which we end up closing the application. So just food for thought for consideration. Who else from the public would like to address this application?
Mr. Dear, do you want to speak on this also? Or Nancy? Angela? Jack M? There's no other hands raised, and I've tried to unmute all of them. And they, none of them are looking to speak, it appears. And the rest is, Ms. Duffield is from, and Channel seventy-nine are both from the press. So I don't think they're here to speak.
Okay, great. In that case, this application is continued to the September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty meeting. Thank you all for your input.
Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, commissioners, decisions. Item number four, deliberation, any possible action on a closed public hearing. Item eight forty-two, Ponus Ridge. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I'd like to offer a comment, or do you want to wait until there's some kind of a motion?
Let's, let's get a motion first and.
Because it's too.
I mean, if everybody's being shy, Dick, you can go ahead and make a comment.
There are two issues, and, you know, I'm not sure that they should be lumped together. One is, I think, a very reasonable request to extend the existing three-month grant of being able to park at West School or on the property, as opposed to in town, to have that extended till the end of the year. I mean, to me, that seems to be fairly reasonable since this whole COVID thing is, is continuing. The wedding proposal or request, I think, raises a different issue. And it perhaps would, in my opinion, create perhaps an unnecessary and perhaps dangerous precedent at two levels. One is, it's been our long-time practice that financial considerations are not a criteria to support a special permit or therefore an amendment to a special permit. And it's pretty clear that the request is based on a financial concern. And I don't think we want to open that door. The second level, which is perhaps an equal concern, at least in my mind, is that we have, over the years, and, you know, this goes back to nineteen ninety-eight. And there have been a number, as we all know, amendments and revisions and requests. And we have gradually approved expansions on the events, the number of events, the timing of events, the season that events may take place, number of people who can attend large functions. And those were in part gradually granted with a clear understanding that there would be no commercial activities. All of the events that have been approved are events that relate to architecture and the approved limited-use museum features. No commercial activities. This would be opening a door, and as I think some of you will recall, it was weddings and bar mitzvahs that did create a concern and problem for the neighborhood. So I think for those two reasons, I don't think we should go down that path. So that's, those are my comments.
John?
I have a motion. I would agree with Mr. Ward that these are separate issues and should be voted on separately. So I'm gonna make a motion on the first point that the applicant made. And that we will, I move that the commission will extend the modification of conditions of the existing special permit that was granted on January twenty-seven, nineteen ninety-eight, less modified on May twenty-six, two thousand twenty regarding access to the museum, which would include parking in West School, among other items, as stated in the application, be extended from the expiration of the current modification deadline to December fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
Okay, John, before we proceed, I just want to make sure procedurally what we're suggesting to do, I'm, I'm fine with it. But Lynn, and, and I'll also ask Jean, since you're the most experienced person on this commission, are the two of you comfortable we can break this down into two separate votes? Okay, Lynn?
Yes, it came in as, you know, one, but you could break it down to two.
Okay, good. We'll go down that road then. Okay, do I have a second for Mr. Cris's motion?
Okay.
Okay. John, you gave your reasons for approval. I will add that the parking situation has been well-handled. And even if West School is in session, I think it will continue to be well-handled. So that would have been, or is my, my first concern, and I'm satisfied on that. Anybody else with a comment?
I'll just highlight my, my motion that in effect, the applicant is unable to access, access its property because of COVID. It can't get buses in there because of social distances, distancing and so forth. And so we've made an accommodation so that the applicant can access its property. As we've heard from the applicant and also from the town planner, there have been no adverse commentary from neighbors and others. And so the current situation that we're suggesting or I'm proposing be extended would seem to be a very straightforward issue with no adverse community effects.
I assume that it would continue to require the approval of the Board of Education, Commission for Education for parking in West School, which may become an issue if the schools are reopened. But that's.
Yeah, Mr. Sage has had pointed, pointed out that, yeah, it's ultimately up to West School.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, call the question, be a roll call. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Jean Grislecki?
Yes.
John Cris?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, carries unanimously. Okay, now on the subject of allowing an event, specifically a wedding, do I have a motion for approval or denial?
I will move for denial based on the comments that I've already made.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Additional reasons for denial? So I will vote against the denial. My reasoning is, it's, first of all, in a normal world, completely agree. It should not be an event, met venue. There should not be weddings or other such celebratory ilk. But this is not normal times. This is arguably the most stressful economic event we will see in our lifetime. It's, can be made clear in any approval that the basis for approving the wedding has all to do with the fact that we are in emergency conditions. I also feel, and I've said this previously, is I know we, we go back and forth on the financial matters. But the reality is that the Glass House, due to an emergency decree of the state of Connecticut, cannot have their annual event. They cannot finance themselves due to the emergency conditions of COVID in the state of Connecticut. And so my concern is by not allowing some event, and, and by the way, as Mr. Sage has pointed out, they don't intend to have any of their other programmatic events. So the footprint of the events for this season will be dramatically below what the normal footprint would have been for the neighborhood. And, and I'll go back to something I said in the prior approval is, even though we're not in the finance business, it's important, quite frankly, to the neighbors for property values, that the Glass House continue to be financially at least semi-healthy. And, and again, to conclude, it's crystal clear that if we allowed a wedding, one wedding, minor footprint, and it would be crystal clear that this is just due to the emergency situation in which we, we are. So I'll vote against the, against the denial.
I'd like to just offer a comment. One, if we approve the way. I'd like to just offer a comment. One, if we approve the wedding, I think it's what's scheduled for October. What, what happens if there is a wedding that should now come up in September or in December or November, that they may view this as a attractive financial tool? I would also point out, John, that I agree with your comments on they are under pressure because of the COVID-19, as a lot of people are throughout this town and throughout the country. So there is pain that's being felt. The Glass House is one entity within the National Trust for Historic Preservation. That is a federally chartered entity that controls a large number of properties, and they have some very substantial endowment funds. Now, I'm basing that on what I get from just looking at Google. So, you know, this is not, I'm not trying to say factually, I know that these are real numbers, but I have no reason not to believe. And I understand that Mr. Sage, his operation is the Glass House, one entity. He has, I assume, little say on what the national organization does. They have separate boards of directors. There is money. So, and they're not going to let the Glass House crumble. I don't think we're going to see cracks in the, in the glass. So I don't have a whole lot of sympathy for their financial concern.
Yeah, Dick, we've, we've had this discussion before, and, and I, I agree with you. It mystifies me a bit as to how funds get translated down. But for such a minor footprint issue in a season in which they're nowhere near their, the footprint to, to the Ponus Ridge area that they normally would have been, I, you know, I just think that, you know, I, I, I don't want to, you know, be the one who, you know, votes against a needed financial situation, assuming that they'll get paid out. The other thing that I will note is, it's been a couple of years since I've been on the property, but they have some significant challenges of keeping that property up. And the last time I toured that property, that property didn't look as ideally, you know, they had buildings closed, they're refurbishing things. I, you know, they're, for whatever reason, and, you know, let's blame the National Endowment, you know, whoever that is. But, you know, you walk around and they're not awash with money, was, was my sense. Anybody else?
I would agree with you, John. I just think it's a very, very different time. All things being equal, I would absolutely agree with Dick, because I think, I always, as you know, worry about precedent. But here, I don't think we have a real precedent. I think this, we're all over town, we're doing things. A lot of the things we've done as far as food service in town, we've changed regulations for that. We, some things have not even come to us, they just haven't. And we have signs all over the place down. And it's going to be an interesting thing to kind of pull everything back to normal. There's no question, once this all calms down. But right now, I think our real responsibility is to be as helpful to all the organizations in town, as well as the business people in town, as we can possibly be.
Anybody else?
Can I just ask a question? Oh, this is Chris.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't realize someone else was talking. If we move, if we vote to approve it, I assume we're just approving one single wedding on October 4th. That's, like, that is what the motion would be.
That's, well, right now, the motion on the table is to deny it. If we come back and somebody makes a motion to approve it, you're, you're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
I'm, I'm with you and Jean. I think the times are such where it's, it's, you know, historic times where people and organizations are in need. And to your point, John, the footprint of this event, that was your description, I think it is of a size significantly smaller than their annual planned picnic or event. I think that one is 300 or 400 people typically. This is a maximum...
500.
500, sorry, 500 people. This is an event for one evening for a maximum of 75 people, and that 75 people might be limited even further, depending on COVID restrictions at the time. So it, as long as our, well, I'm suggesting approval, so as long as our approval is conditioned on no more than 75 people, I think it's a manageable event for this particular wedding and condition during this particular year and, and limiting it to this one event.
Anybody else? Okay, I call the motion. It'll be a roll call. I vote to deny the motion of denial. Mrs. Grislecki?
I vote to deny the denial.
Mr. Chris?
I vote in favor.
Mr. Radman?
I vote to deny the denial.
Uh, Mr. Ward?
I approve the denial.
Mrs. Nielsen?
Deny the denial.
Okay. The motion is denied. Do I have a motion to potentially approve the application?
I would move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I think we've already made our positions clear, unless anybody wants to add anything at this point before I call the, call the roll call.
Can we make it clear regarding the maximum number of people on site, as well as the start and end time, as well as potential for changing the date of the event, perhaps? You know, Aunt Martha can't show up that date, so we got to move it two days, something like this?
Or, or is there a potential, is there currently a scheduled rain date for the event?
That's a good question. We did not ask Mr. Sage's that question. And we cannot ask that question, because we've closed the application.
But we could, if it, if the planned event is October 4th, which is a Saturday, I believe, right? Just double check. Uh, Sunday. So if the planned event is on October 4th, Sunday, we could put a condition in there that the rain date can be rescheduled to the following Sunday, the 11th, but not to exceed the 11th.
Jean, are you, is that, Jean, you made the motion. Is that acceptable to you?
I, I would prefer just to have a, what becomes an emergency date, rather than just say it has to be the following weekend, because generally speaking, people come from distances for weddings.
Yeah, that's a good point.
They are putting up tents, so I almost, they probably go ahead with the wedding no matter what.
Right, that's the thing.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Mr. Goodwin, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, if you want to condition it, you could condition it to any sector rules that come down from the state of Connecticut, since they're the ones who are setting up the guidelines and making a determination about the number of people that would be allowed and the distance requirements and all of that, and that's subject to change. We've already seen it change. On Friday, the 21st, there was already an extension to outdoor dining, to extend it to November 12th. So I'm sure there's going to be guidelines coming down soon.
Well, in the application, Mr. Sage has said there would be no more than 75 guests, correct?
Right, yes.
Did he give a number for the support personnel?
I don't believe...
Um, I don't believe he did, actually.
I mean, I, look, I don't think it would be a huge number, so. I know, Jean, look, Jean, you've made the, moved the motion. Is there anything you want to incorporate?
No, I, I think we, I think Mr. Sage has already included the state restrictions. So I think we're fine with that, because that's in this application.
Can, can we make it clear that this is, if the vote is to approve it, that it's for the one wedding, which is one exception to the existing non-commercial activities of the existing special permit, and that we're not approving weddings of 75 or less?
In general.
In general.
Jean, you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I would also suggest that the 75 guest number, which would include the bride and groom, everyone who's not an employee of the National Trust or hired caterers and so forth, that it's 75. So if victory is declared tomorrow over COVID, it's still 75, even though they can have any number of people according to this.
Yeah, John, John, Mr. Sage has said in his application, it would not be more than 75.
Okay. I want to be sure we're clear on the 75 number.
Yeah, that's, that's what his application says.
Good, fair enough.
I, I think we're good. Did I get a second?
Mr. Radman seconded.
For approval, yeah. Okay, great. Okay, call the question, roll call. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Jean Grislecki?
Yes.
John Criss?
Nay.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
No.
Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, right, item number five, Krista or Lynn, any planning subcommittee updates for us?
Unless you have anything to add, Krista, my update would just be that we're going to hold a subcommittee meeting on the 29th. That's the plan, which is September 29th. If we, we're in the middle of researching some of the other topics we discussed last month.
Okay. Krista, anything to add?
Nope, that covers it.
Okay. Any other commissioners, anything to add? Lynn, one thing I would encourage you to do is, at least two weeks in advance, remind all the subcommittee members.
Okay.
I think sometimes people forget. Okay, item number six, administrative actions or other matters may properly come before the commission. A, St. Luke's School, 377 North Wilton Road, request approval to rent out the athletic facilities for the fall of 2020. Lynn, is anybody presenting this, or are you handling it?
No, it's me. And it's, we had it up on the website. It's just pretty standard. It's the same athletic stuff that they have during the, during a regular year, but obviously they're following the, the Connecticut Sector Guidelines with respect to school reopening and athletic activities and all of that. So this is their request for the fall of 2020, and assuming that COVID stays where it is, they're hoping to move forward.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Lynn? Pretty basic, right? Okay, unfortunately, we do have to take a roll call vote. Well, I need somebody to move the motion.
I move approval.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. John Goodwin votes yes. Jean Grislecki?
Yes.
John Criss?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Item number seven, approval of the minutes, July 28, 2020. Does anybody have any changes for those minutes? Looks like that's a big no. So do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
I got a second from John. John Goodwin votes yes. Jean Grislecki?
Yes.
John Criss?
Yes.
Dan Radman?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Kristin Nielsen?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting's adjourned. We did pretty well tonight.
John?
Yeah.
And this can be post-adjourned. I would like to ask perhaps if Lynn, on the day of the next meeting or the day before, gives the Zoom link. It took me, I apologize for being a little late to this meeting, but I had, I realized that we didn't have one in an email from Lynn this time, so I had to sort of sort through the P and Z commission websites to find the link.
Dick, you weren't on that email, because there was an email.
Was there?
It was on the agenda.
It, it's on the agenda, and I apologize. I'll, I can resend out a link. I sent it out the other day, but also, and there were a lot of emails that came out in between, so I can send out another link in the afternoon.
And that's, I mean, I think there was an email, but that's actually a good idea, Lynn, if you can resend it the day of the hearing, because you...
That's fine.
I agree.
Well, I tend to look at Lynn's, her description of what's on the agenda as being much, much more interesting than the actual agenda.
For sure.
No problem. I'll, I'll make sure to do that. I apologize that I didn't do it today.
Okay, so everybody enjoy the rest of summer, and once again, happy birthday, Lynn. Go have some cake with your family.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
Here goes.
Bye.